At this time, we'll have the pledge of allegiance and then Mr. Hooper will lead us in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we come to you this afternoon and we just pause and give you thanks for the beautiful day that you have given us. We thank you, Father, for so many blessings, but most importantly, we thank you, Father, for your son. We thank you for the freedom and the privilege that we have together, together. And Father, we just pray for each of these board members, for the decisions that they make, that they will be in the best interest of our most precious resource, our children. Father, I would just ask that you guide and direct them in all the decisions that they make. It's in Jesus' name we ask and pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Trevor.
Call meeting ordered. Roll call.
This action is taken by calling each board member's name with the board member entering present. Mr. Murray?
Present.
Mr. Selby?
Present.
Ms. Wilson?
Present.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Present.
And Mr. Kazook?
Present.
All board members present.
Next item is the adoption of the agenda.
Nothing has been added to the agenda itself. We did add the other contract under the contract section for the MOA with the Area Technology Center that I sent you all Saturday evening when I got it, and it's been added to evening. But as far as the agenda itself, Mr. Kazook, nothing's been added. So I, no corrections or amendments. I recommend the agenda be approved as presented.
I make the motion to approve adoption of the agenda. I'll say it.
Okay. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
And Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item is public comments. Anybody have anything they'd like to bring? Say it. If not, we'll move on. Number six is presentation. Jamestown Elementary School Resource Officer, Jamie Rogers, Kentucky Association School Resource Officers Rookie of the Year.
At this time, I would like Mr. Rogers to come up to the stage and I think Mrs. Blankenship and Mr. Greider is going to say a few words. And Mayor Hinden and Chief Kearns, please join us on the stage as well. This might turn on the light because she's got a lot to say about you, Mr. Rogers. This is an absolute honor to have Mr. Rogers here with us this evening. We appreciate Mayor Hinden being present and Chief Kearns and, as I said, Mr. Greider, Mrs. Blankenship regarding Mr. Rogers as well. Some of you may know that he is, he was nominated and was now the recipient of the Kentucky Association of School Resource Officers Rookie of the Year. This is a statewide award and I could not think of anybody else that is more deserving than this. It is, it is amazing the number of people that comment on Mr. Rogers. You will see him actively walking around that school and checking the doors. You will see him actively going down that hallway and checking the doors and letting you know if you don't want to unlock. He does that, he does that too. But it's bigger than that. You will see Mr. Rogers nailing next to a child as he talks to them. You'll see him sitting next to a child on the bench, maybe giving a counsel when they haven't done just exactly what they shouldn't have done. He's a lot more, Mr. Greider talks to this, SRO is a lot more than just a police officer. And Mr. Rogers represents that so well. He's a counselor, he's a friend, he's a father, he's all those figures rolling in the wind. So, Mr. Rogers, I'll present you with your plaque from Mrs. Blankenship, Mr. Greider can speak. On behalf of Russell County Board of Education presents to Mr. Jamie Rogers in recognition of Kentucky Association School Resource Officers Rookie of the Year, Russell County Schools, May 15, 2023. He'll be recognized at the state conference in June and so very well, I appreciate your support. You get to hear that. And I know the city is going to recognize Mr. Rogers.
Well, Mr. Ford, you didn't leave me much to say, but I think that was a copy. Jamie is certainly, he embodies what an SRO should be and I think the, I love that the council that chose him for this award made the right choice. Everybody who wants to get an SRO should come and spend some time with him and see what he does. He is protective of all of us, of course, but also professional and very personable. He's a role model for our children and has made just an amazing amount of friends there among all those children. Many of our students are afraid of police. And when he first came, that's one of the things that we talked about, is that I would really like him to do his best to change that, that idea that they have, that they need to be afraid and instead, you know, to trust. And he's built that, that trust with all of them and with all of us. So, and he does, he does send Mr. Ford emails when he finds doors in the lock, even when his principal is the one that left the door. Things happen, yes. Anyway, we're not, he doesn't show up by any of the kids, which is a good thing. So, again, I just think that I could have made a better selection. I'm so proud. I'm proud of him and just very, very grateful that he's there with us at Jamestown.
This is, this is, this is the dedication, Mr. Rogers.
The first day that Jamie was there, I just walked with him and we talked and, and, you know, he asked questions and I, we walked through the school. And one of the things that I said was, it would be wonderful if you could learn some names, you know, some of the students' names. And I gave him a yearbook, an old yearbook, and just said, maybe this will help. I know, you know, a lot of people in this community, but all these little ones you don't know. If you could learn some of their names, that would be great. And I promise you, it wasn't, it might have been two or three days. And as they were coming through the door, every, he was calling all of their names and I'm thinking, and I looked at him and I said, did you go home and memorize this yearbook? And he didn't ever say, but he just turned and he knew all their names. So, he did go home and memorize the yearbook. Talk about what it is. And like Mr. Ford says, I've seen multiple times, get down on his knees or pick up a little one that was crying. You know, just, he protects us and loves all of us at the same time. So, could have been much better than that, I think.
I know the Rookie of the Year, of course, many years ago on, many years, Mr. Rogers. But you're eligible for the Rookie SRO, you're a first time SRO, but certainly not a Rookie Police Officer, but you would think you'd be seasoned SRO.
Just to piggyback off of Mr. Ford's talking about as far as season, officer, being inside that vehicle, working the streets and chasing, and part of that was, is to get to that level where he's at, I already knew he had that in him because even being an SRO period at that time was kind of on my own. But he would always call check, what do you need from me? What do you need for project graduation? What do you need for me to, for getting traffic out for, for graduation or whatever? But anyway, that being a seasoned officer, coming out of that car, going into a setting of just little junior high schools and kids holding on to him and hugging him. He come into a brand new world. So, it takes a while for a SRO to condition herself to get into that setting of, other than setting in a car chasing fellas tonight, or we're having, we're having their hands on someone, or we're doing the right thing and just doing a civic duty. However, he transitioned very well and very quickly and the other SROs are changing as they come and I can see that change too for, after being 23, 24 years in as an SRO. I didn't come right in off the street just kind of with full compassion and all things. So, they have to, we crawl ourselves, they have to, to work their way into that setting. He fell right in, Mr. Rogers fell right in. I knew he would. He's just an exceptionary for that. And part of that getting nominated, there's 120 counties, he's, he's, he's exalted that. He's, he's met 120 counties.
120 counties, 171 school districts.
So, each one of them has that opportunity to, to make that Rookie of the Year to him. So, he met that. So, part of, part of that was the school, the push from that, Mr. Blankenship, Mr. Ford, everybody being a part of that. Also, he, he just did it on his own. He's just that example. Just a quick example, I'll let you get back to the board meeting, but we're doing a practice lockdown with Mrs. Blankenship. A lot of times when we're done with that lockdown, we will do a, a debrief and just to see how it went, what we need to work on, was there any room to just allow, not to critique or beat some student or stack down, but just to see what we needed to do. So, we're all in hub. All of a sudden, we're in conversations going on. I miss Mr. Rogers. He's gone. But we're standing in that front lobby area of the Jamestown. I looked at Mrs. Blankenship, a reference, got a picture of that. I took a picture. He's gone. He's broken loose from us. There was a teacher going down the hall with a student, just a little out of sorts a little bit. He's gone. He's in there on his knees. I got a picture of that. I share that, you know, he's on his knees, he's got himself in there in the cafeteria. And I told him, Mrs. Blankenship, I said, don't forget that every day. But anyway.
I'll go first and thank you, Mr. Mayor Hinden and Chief Kearns. It is the collaboration. Yeah, it's certainly not Russell County Schools, but this embodies what different entities working together can, can do for kids. And the placement of resource officers in Russell County Schools is a collaboration spirit between so many different RFP entities. I'm absolutely thankful for that. So, let's take right here and we'll get a group picture real quick. Mr. Rogers, can you come in?
Talk, talk about the kids. I think it's the first day I came in and one little boy come up to me. And she looks up at me and he says, my daddy don't like the place. He's big, quite witty. I looked at him and I said, that's okay. And I said, I think he don't like the place. I said, but here's what I'm gonna do. I said, I'm gonna be here. You can get to know him. And I said, you can decide if you like me or not. And I said, well, you never know. I'm a student, I'm a friend. Go back to Australia every day. And just get on another thing, on the, the names. Ms. Diane put me, put me in good positions to succeed while I've been there. Your book helped greatly. But learning the names is something, two parts. One, it's hard to have positive relationships if you don't, don't know somebody's name. And I can't say that I know everyone, but probably at one or another, this school year, we've had roughly about 490 kids. I probably know 470 of them without, without any delay. Know all the teachers, assistants, front office staff, counselors, nurses, custodians, kitchen staff. I know all them. I know those, yeah, and I, and I even talk to the parents that pick up and the siblings that aren't at school yet. They look for me all evening in the vehicles. But building positive relationships with the kids, learning their names and going from there. But the second part of that is, so it's not just a number or a face. In the event something happens, God forbid, I think I would go a little harder because it's not fair. But it's not just a number, it's not just a face. So, that's, that's kind of my reason for learning the names and going after that.
I've got to tell you, I was eating lunch with a group of corporations one time and they said, why do you, why do you and Mr. Rogers look so much alike? I, I, Mr. Reddick's never, I've never connected it, but I remember they were going with the back.
Same thought.
Thank you. Mr. Murray, did you have anything to say about Regina before she gets off the stage?
No, I, you wouldn't talk to me, Kevin, and I'd talk to her name.
Or maybe you got something to say about him. Thank you all. Appreciate you being here. That's a good show.
Next item is agenda. Russell County Education Association Certified Employee Recognition, Russell County Middle School Teacher, Jerika Eric.
I can't move to this other side because we have to do the walk the whole, whole place in front of everybody. It's my pleasure tonight to share this award with Ms. Jerika. As a young lady, many years ago, we were just debating how many years ago that has been. This young lady sat down at a kind of a kidney shaped table and wanted to read with a packet that was developed by lots and lots of people. Cindy Roberts been one of those people. Brian Moore been another. Just lots of people had worked on this packet to help little people learn to read. And they started with learning their letters and they moved to sounds and then to words and then to sentences. And so, seated there within the hours, she wanted to read. And so, it's kind of emotional for me to think about her here.
Now you get to have her on the stage with you.
Yes, yes. And, and being here as a teacher with me. But anyways, I will share some things about her. She is a wonderful person to work with. I had a pleasure of working with her son here at the AMC. But her experience is grade seven for right now. She teaches social studies. She was with me in ELA and she was over here. She says, I taught my first three years at Cumberland County Middle School, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade ELA. She's been back home at Russell County Middle School since 2014 and I've taught ELA until this school year. Her colleges include Lindsey Wilson College for a Bachelor of Arts in Middle Grades 5 through 9, English and Social Studies, and University of Cumberland as Master of Arts and Teacher as Leader. When asked, what do you like best about teaching the kids? The work where I deal with them is very important to me and love making a difference in their lives. From teaching with her, I have noticed that most of the time that she was teaching their society, she would always have strings of kids wanting to come in and talk with her and say something to her or just make a comment or whatever. So, she does have a wonderful rapport with her students. Her hobbies include spending time with her husband and her daughter. She says she loves to bake, especially to share with others. So, any time, especially this time here, did you get, build one in the beat when she brings some stuff in? And her favorite quote is, "The only person you are destined to become is the person you decide to be." Right following. So, it's with great pleasure I share this, this check in this honor with Ms. Jerika.
Well, like Mrs. Rhonda said, and she's always been strong with me, she did teach me how to read and then later on, when I was in college at Lindsey, I had a night class with Miss Rhonda as well. And I used to like to tell her right then and remind her every time, every after then. And then, it's, it's just been awesome getting to come back home, like I said, and teach with, with some of the people that have been so influential in my life, including Ms. Rhonda. And, you know, to have her be there for me from the very beginning to be a coworker and somebody I hired, worked with too. It's taught me a great many things. And so, teachers like her have, have made me want to be that kind of teacher and, you know, one that stays in the minds of, of the kids throughout their lives. So, I really do do it for the kids. That's the best part about this job. Amazing stuff that the kids are, are working for. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Next item is consent agenda.
We have the previous meeting minutes, payment of bills, school activity fund reports, field trips, and the treasurer's monthly report. Ms. Kearns will present that.
Treasurer's report for the month of April 2023. Balance on hand at the beginning of the month was $8,693,549.43. Total receipts for the month were $1,738,030.95. And that brings the total of all the receipts beginning balance together to $10,431,580.38. Disbursements for the month were $3,025,398.49. And the balance at the close of the month was $7,406,181.89. In Fund Finals, this is the General Fund, Fund One, $7,898,159.98. In Special Projects Fund Two, negative $1,495,686.7. District Activity Fund Twenty One, $13,335.11. Capital Outlay Fund Three Ten, $140,952. Even. FSPK Building Fund, Fund Three Twenty, $852,339.32. Construction Fund Three Sixty, negative $1,149,187.93. Debt Service Fund, $400. Food Service Fund Fifty One, $1,142,641.78. Adversarial Fund, Fund Seven Thousand, Three Thousand, Six Hundred, Twenty Seven Dollars, Seventy Cent. Total Cash Paid for all the funds, $7,106,181.89. So, I will point out, Special Projects Fund Two, we received a little over $2 million in federal cash requests. I want to say we came in one day last week. And also, I believe last Tuesday, we received our proceeds from the bond sale for the athletic facilities that go in the construction fund. So, I believe next month, at the end of May, we'll see both of those be positive. Construction should stay that way for a while, but of course, Fund Two is a lot of spend it and then get reimbursed. So, it, it often runs negative due to that fact.
The board members, I sent you all that email from the, from the bond sale. We received that. All that went off without a hitch. Thank you, Ms. Kearns. There are no changes or amendments. I recommend approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion. I'll make the motion.
Ms. Shelby?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Roll.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Okay, item nine, change order, deduct for Russell County Board of Education Central Office Roof Project.
The attached change order is a deduct as we close out the purchase order for the Russell County Board of Education Central Office Roof Project. They had allocated $6,000 for a use of a generator while they were on site, but instead, they used the electric that was provided there and they didn't have to bring in a generator. So, that's a deduct that they had budgeted for $6,000. So, that will come off of their, of their, of their final amount. So, I recommend approval of the change order deduct for the Russell County Board of Education Central Office Roof Project and authorize superintendent Ford to complete the necessary paperwork.
I make a motion, that and that. Always nice.
Deducts are the best. Let's try.
Roll.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Okay, next item on contracts, memorandum of agreements.
Okay, the following contracts, memorandums, agreements are attached for your review and approval with the Green River Regional Educational Cooperative Project Access Memorandum of Agreement. This is a really exciting opportunity to where if, if staff is available with this, our educational cooperative will help provide mental health specialists, therapists to work with our district and then we would pay them and they would pay, we would get reimbursed from, from this grant. The problem is, just being completely transparent, there's a limited number of qualified people like that available. And they have to hire some, I think it's five, Ms. Dameron may know off the top of her head, for the, for the GREG to hire initially, right? It's kind of oversee things. And then, as they become available, we'll have some, hopefully, maybe available for the district. But this is the district memorandum of agreement for that. And then, our yearly Cumberland Family Medical Center Agreement for our satellite clinic, which we refer to as the Healthy Kids Clinic. The American Red Cross, this is the agreement that's not been updated for several years. It is in the event of a, of a disaster here in the county, some catastrophic event, to where the American Red Cross would need to come in and utilize our school facilities as a result of that. And then, the Lake Cumberland District Health Department, two programs that they've been doing for several years in Russell County Schools, Sexual Risk Avoidance Education and Making a Difference, or what we refer to as MAD. Both of those programs, I do want to note, require that parents sign a permission form before the children participate in them. So, it's not one that just goes home and says, hey, it's not a passive permission slip to where parents only return the form. If they don't, they have to return the form and we've been doing that for several years. And then, also with the, it's called the Reducing the Risk, great programs with the Health Department. And they will also offer faculty, for faculty, parents and guardians, the opportunity to preview the curriculum and ask any questions before either one of those programs are implemented for the 23, 24 school year. But again, they, we've been doing those programs for, for several years now. And then, we have the, the MOA that I sent Friday or Saturday evening when I got that. And it's regarding the use of the Lake Cumberland ATC, or what we refer to as Lake Cumberland Regional College and Workforce Center. As you know, this, that is our facility that we own, as the Board of Education owns. And then, Kentucky Department of Education uses that because the center is a state ranked facility. But it outlines the responsibilities of the district and the responsibilities of the Kentucky Department of Education, specifically the Office of Career Technical Education. And without that agreement, then we would not, we, we receive funds kind of like grants, but to help with maintenance and facility issues, the extra custodian that we have there that the board employs, all those things like that, those funds included in that comes back to the district and that we, we use to take care of that building. I recommend approval of the contracts or memorandum of agreements that's been approved by the board attorney.
I'll say it.
Roll.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Next item is professional leave of absence.
Mr. Joe Wolford has, he continues to serve as vice president of the Kentucky Education Association. He was reelected to another three-year term. The second term will begin June 15, 2023. He's requested a professional leave of absence. Of course, this is without pay for the 23, 24 school year. His letter of request is attached. This is something that you all see yearly from, from Mr. Wolford. He left us, at that time that he left, he was a librarian there at Russell Springs Elementary School. But he's currently serving as vice president of KDA. I recommend that the Russell County Board of Education grant Joe Wolford a professional leave of absence without pay for the 23, 24 school year.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Murray?
No.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Item 12, amendment, student worker for Information Technology IT Program Department.
This has been really exciting and opportunities for this, these students in our IT department. At the January 23, 2023 meeting, you all approved for the, for that student worker in our IT department. And that young man has just been great. He will be moving on to, to another thing this summer, but we have another young man that's interested in working in the same pathway to work this summer. At that time, we said that we could review it at a later date. During the school year, that, it's not been exceeding 20 hours per week and it's, it's been paid minimum wage. We would like to allow that young, allow the student worker to work 40 hours a week at $10 per hour for summer employment. Just, you can imagine what the IT department does for the thousands of devices that we have during the summer. It'd be a great help and a great opportunity for another student worker in, in that department. And this will just be for one student worker, not, not two or anything like that for the summer. But I recommend approval of the student worker for the Information Technology Department or IT Department, paid at $10 per hour, not to exceed 40 hours per week. And I cannot emphasize enough how doors that those programs are opening for students, that Mr. Sloan and that crank that we have, this is part of that, falls underneath that umbrella. And I was talking to Mr. Sloan's director just this past week, his name is also Sloan, they're not kin. But he says that Mick Sloan is a model for the other participants in that program that's doing what his role is. So we've been really, really blessed with that. And I know I've shared with you all before, the hospital CEO, many entities where his students are out working have just been so complimentary of that program. So it's just a win. And this student IT worker has been just as equally great for Russell County schools.
I'll make a motion to approve this student to work for 40 hours for $10 per hour.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Shelby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Balton?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Thank you all for that, that's just really exciting.
Okay, next item, buses for the 35th Annual Catch a Rainbow Kids Fishing Derby.
Of course, this wasn't, I'm sorry, this wasn't done during COVID. Anxious prevalence back up and there was a mix-up with the buses last year. The board had provided buses per year, kind of like our contribution to this, to what I think is a great event, the Annual Catch a Rainbow Kids Fishing Derby's June 3 of this year. Russell County Schools has been asked to partner by providing two buses to drivers, one regular bus and one handicap accessible bus. They'll aid in transporting the children and adults to and from the activity sites. And I'll give you all the link to further explore that. But just a great event, a great partnership. The Fish Hatchery is a great asset to Russell County Schools and a great partner. And I fully support that we continue providing this. Recommend that the Russell County Board of Education provide two buses to drivers, one regular bus and one handicap accessible bus to assist in transporting children and adults to and from the activity site for the Annual Catch a Rainbow Kids Fishing Derby at the Wolf Creek National Fish Hatchery.
If you've never been, you should know.
Yeah, it's a great, great event.
They are gone.
Hundreds upon hundreds, yeah.
Your motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Roll.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Shelby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Balton?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item, the student shortened school day and/or week.
Local boards of education must approve requests for students to have a shortened school day or a and/or week. The decision is determined by the needs of the student. The documentation, including the board's recommendation, is then submitted to the Kentucky Department of Education. I always want to share with you that this is retroactive to the, what we call the ARC date or the IUPT meeting date, to where the committee met to decide that the student needed a shortened school day and/or week. This is for student ID S23-01. That means the 10th student for this school year. And if you all approve that, then we'll send the necessary documentation as forwarded to the Kentucky Department of Education. Again, retroactive to that effective date.
I'll make a motion to that effect. I'll second it.
Roll.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Shelby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Balton?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And again, that option is only available for students that are in special education and there's unique needs.
Next item is fundraiser approvals.
The following groups have received approval from the superintendent for the listed fundraisers. James Elementary School, May 19th to the 25th of 2023, for the Spastic Book Fair. And Russell Springs Elementary School, August 5, 2023, the Kona Ice during 127 yard sale. Not to be set up on school property. I think they're going to be set up in the Kmart parking lot. Because we don't use the school property during the yard sale. But Kona Ice said they would set up and then give their park for the PTO back to Russell Springs Elementary School. So I recommend approval of the school by fundraisers.
Motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Roll.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Shelby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Balton?
Yes.
And Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
You were going to make bids on it?
Next item is accept or reject bids for the 1984 Chevrolet box truck scrap and 1993 bus scrap.
So we were pleased to receive bids on these two items. The sealed bids received were open and tabulated by central office staff on May 10 at 9:05. We had the following bids for the 1984 Chevrolet box truck. Michael Grimsley, $1,000. Bradley Burton, $560. Billy Coe, $350. And David McDonald at $151. So obviously, Mr. Grimsley there for the $1,000. And on the bus, the 1993 bus scrap, Bradley Burton at $430. Phil Oaks, $400. Michael Grimsley at $400. And David McDonald at $51. So I recommend approval of the bids received from Michael Grimsley of the 1984 Chevrolet box truck and Bradley Burton on the 1993 bus that are both scrapped. A lot of work going on out there. Be glad to get these two items out of the way, sitting out there at the back of the bus garage.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll.
Okay, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Shelby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Balton?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Tickle to death to have them out of there.
Was there any more junk within sale lockout?
We've got some more, I think.
The box truck run pretty good.
They're just harder to get rid of than the truck and the buses, yeah.
Next item, declare surplus school nutrition items.
Our school nutrition program has several items that are no longer needed. List is attached for Russell County Board of Education Policy 04.8. The superintendent shall advise the board when certain properties are no longer needed for public school purposes. Upon receiving this report, the board may at such times deem proper and after compliance with applicable state federal regulations, authorize the disposal of school properties through closed seal bids, public auctions, or sales of at least the fair market value established by certified appraisal. And then the board reserves the right to reject any and all bids. And of course, the policies attached. Salem has two South Bend convection double stack electric ovens. They're 208 volt, three-phase, and they are on casters. And James Elementary School has two Wolf convection double stack ovens, 480 volt, three-phase with casters. And then I recommend that the Russell County Board of Education declare the attached list as surplus property, authorize Superintendent Ford to grant or his designate to advertise for sealed bids with the option to reject any and all bids. And then we'll bring back the bids to you all for approval, just like on the other ones.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Roll.
Help us spread the word about them, for sure.
It's going to kill them three-phase.
Yeah, yeah, that's the issue. Yeah. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Shelby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Balton?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item is out-of-state and/or overnight trips.
The following group has received approval from the superintendent for the following out-of-state trip, May 10 through the 13, 2023, which has just happened, the Russell County High School Bass Fishing Team. And by our policy, when an event gets to progress, then the superintendent can approve it and then we just bring it back to you all. Because there's often not time to meet to do that. We changed that several years ago.
What's going on?
Yeah, the bass fishing team. Move on. So I recommend approval of the following state, for the following out-of-state and/or overnight trip.
I'll make a motion to approve out-of-state and/or overnight trips.
They do a great job.
I'll second.
Roll.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Shelby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Balton?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item, Russell County Schools, 2023, 24, Continuation of Learning MTI Plan.
So the continuation of learning plan for districts, this is something that the board has to approve every year. It's what we always shortcut down and say we're having an NTI day. This is for sickness, flu. It has to be for something. It cannot be, for instance, if we won a tournament and wanted to close school because we were going to a state competition, cannot use an NTI for that. It has to be natural disasters, weather-related sickness, those types of things. But this is a supplement to our district improvement plan and not a lot of change. Ms. McCall, do you have anything to add from previous years with this, from current year?
Mr. Formally, there's a landing here and it's basically like it was last year.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. I recommend that the Russell County School, this is the least we had, was it three or four, Mrs. Dameron? Three, yeah, we only had three NTI days this year. Yeah, that's it. Yeah, I recommend that the Russell County Schools, 23, 24, Continuation of Learning Plan. Again, what we refer to as NTI days be approved as presented. There's a lot of things, and I appreciate our principals and Mrs. McCall and others that helped tabulate that because they have to take participation. It's not, it does not end just because we say we're having an NTI day and then teachers grade assignment. There's a lot of things that have to come on the backside of that. And then we get notice from the commissioner that our days were approved. Because otherwise, it would not be approved and we would lose that day. Ms. McCall shaking her head, yes. But we've never lost a day. But they have to look at your documentation, what's been submitted, your participation amounts, all those things like that. So it's not just called an NTI day and it's said and done. There's a lot of things that go behind the scenes that makes us ensure that that is a day. And then we'll get notice by the commissioner later on that all those dates have been approved.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, we need the NTI day.
I'll second.
Roll.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Shelby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Balton?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
My first year as superintendent, we missed 16 days. No, 16, 16.
Next item is K-12.
2013. LAU.
LAU, yep. K-12 LAU Plan for Serving English Learners.
And this is something that you all have been seeing for several years now. It is a required plan and that LAU plan, the L-A-U part, literally came from a lawsuit back in 1974 regarding services for students that do not speak English. We're required to formulate a plan for English learners. And it could be a student that speaks Spanish, it could be a student that speaks French, Ukraine, whatever. But the plan is for everybody that is not a native speaking for, as an English language learner and for servicing our English learners in Russell County schools. And so the K-12 LAU Plan for Serving English Learners in Russell County Schools, that's what's attached and I recommend that that be approved as presented. And again, this is a plan that you all have seen each and every year. We have two teachers, we're blessed with that, in Russell County schools that serve as teachers. And they're both bilingual for Spanish, which that's predominantly our population that are not native to English speaking. And then we have two instructional assistants that work in that program as well. And the need is great, the need is very great. We'll have a student that enrolls in a high school class that is non-speaking, I mean, of English, don't be misread. Ms. Rita takes care of the access test and it's very comprehensive to where they, they're tested separately until they reach that proficiency and they're exced out of the program. But it's very comprehensive and they have to do a lot of that to see how they're progressing with their English skills. But there's a lot to this, but those folks work very hard for our students, very hard, very hard. Yes, Ms. Joyce said they're spreading things in 100%, yes.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Roll.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Shelby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Balton?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item, Russell County Schools, SY2, 2023, 2024, Professional Development Plan.
Again, this is a plan that we bring to the board every year for approval. This is for the school year 23, 24. I think Ms. McCall's going to hit some of the highlights of what's in the plan. It's the same thing that's in your packet.
Right here?
Yes.
You still got to dig your voice.
But any plans, like it's reported, said this has been incorporated into ARC for the last several years now. But the purpose behind it is to help you align your goals and look at your local needs assessment and really try to purposefully plan to meet those needs. And what they do in this plan, they ask you to focus on two areas. And our two areas now and for several years in the past have been, one, increasing student achievement, and two, closing the achievement gap. These are statewide goals, but obviously, you know, we've heard many things this evening, you know, we just want our ELO, you know, have students with disabilities. We want to close that gap. We want all students to continue to grow and achieve. But then we, you know, sometimes overlook some of those subgroups that need extra help. So these are plans that help get everyone, hopefully all the needs met for them. So what we've done for the past few years, our goal has been trying to look for PDs that provide engagement strategies. We were very fortunate in 2018 to receive a literacy grant. And this was all about engagement strategy, helping kids learn to read, not just in reading class, but across all content areas. So this is kind of the beginning of just real purposeful professional training. This was a three-year grant the last year, you know, COVID kind of disrupted them a little bit. But many teachers still use those strategies to help their students learn to read in elementary school and then read to learn as they go through middle and high school. So we all know the importance of literacy and how important it is to be able to read across all content areas and take that on out into after-school life. The second thing that we did was just this past year, because we, you know, had a little key there for COVID, but we had a gentleman named John O'Connor come in, speak to all of our faculty. He's an author, he's a presenter, he goes all over the country presenting what he calls great instruction. And basically, it's all based on the engagement cycle. So again, engagement with our grant, engagement with John O'Connor. And it was just, you know, kind of getting teachers back into, you know, hey, we've had some bumps in the road, had to learn how to redo everything, now we're back in school. Let's just all remember what good teaching is, what engagement means for our students. Because it was a big transition for the students and the teachers to come back after COVID. So now what we're looking for.
I want to show my, Ms. McCall, three times this year during our principal and admin meetings, Mr. O'Connor zoomed back in with us, just to kind of check back in with us and go over some things that we should be seeing kind of as a result of our training, what were some of those hiccups and questions that the principals had. And that's been beneficial to have that ongoing conversation. It wasn't just, okay, I'm here to do a training, you all go back to classroom, do your thing. It was good follow-up throughout the school year.
And we also invented PD, kind of with everything that we do, the PLCs in the school. And that's how we try to help these things continue on. Check in with the teachers, see what's working, see what's not working, see what kind of support that we can offer, see how the kids are reacting to it, see how the teachers are reacting to it. So the PLCs that invented PD throughout the school year is also very, very valuable. So what we're looking forward this year, we've been working on this for a little over a year now, is Cagan strategy. So in August, we're going to have two days of Cagan structures. And that's just kind of their way of saying strategies. I think a lot of people have heard of Cagan in the past. I know we have had many teachers in our district who have requested to go to Cagan trainings before. It's not enough to go, but it's a very extensive training because they were a very reputable company. They have evidence-based research behind all this and that's what you, I mean, you can read forever on why their strategies work. So we're very excited to bring them in. And we're trying to get teachers and principals and everyone to understand is like, okay, we're not stopping the literacy grant strategies. We're not stopping what we learned with John O'Connor because it's all about engagement. And that's really what Cagan advertises. That's kind of their catchphrase, it's all about engagement. And so, you know, they say when students are engaged, and we all know this, they pay attention more, they're more motivated, they learn more, the learning sticks. And what Cagan kind of says is, yes, traditional teaching will work. But if a teacher's at hockey, or they're trying to get some feedback from their students, everybody's got their hand up, they call on Mr. Ford. Well, everybody else is kind of lays back because they're not going to be the one on, you know, getting the firing at them.
The hot seat.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to say, thank you. So what these structures are, they engage all students. That's what they crack themselves in. And if you look at some of the things that they promote, the things that they talk about is, our number one goal is increasing student achievement, which is one of our top two focuses. Their second goal is closing the achievement gap, which is our second focus. second goal is closing the achievement gap, which is our second focus. So this goes right in line with what we are trying to do in our district. And the other things that, you know, you just get as kind of a bonus, it talks about how it decreases discipline levels, it increases social, emotional learning and feelings, and it also decreases racial tensions. So it's all about collaborative learning, it's all about making everyone accountable, it's about teachers being engaged, it's about students being engaged, and they have about two hundred structures. And we won't learn all two hundred of those in two days, but we were fortunate enough, the company allowed us to go to one day of training in a neighboring district. And I mean, you are up or moving, and they practice those strategies. So the teachers learn them very easily. And the strategies go across all content areas, all grade levels, and it's something that you can basically pull out of your back pocket and use. There's not a lot of prep and planning in it. Once you learn the structures, you just use them. The kids start knowing them. They know exactly what to do, what's expected. And again, that engagement cycle or, you know, the engagement strategies are what we hope is going to lessen our gap and help kids continue to improve. And I went to the website just last week, just to see if they had anything new that I hadn't seen in the last couple of months as I've been working with the Cagan representatives. And another thing that they have posted from some of the data that they have researched, districts can truly implement these Cagan strategies with fidelity. In two years, on their achievement tests, they see ten-point gains across all areas, reading, math, science, social studies. They talk about ninety-eight percent of teachers who attend these trainings and go back and implement these strategies have a positive feedback with these. They say their kids are more engaged. They say, I go home feeling less tired, and my kids look a little bit more tired than I am, because they're actually doing more of the work than I have been, what I've been doing some more traditional teaching strategies. So we're very excited to bring this to all of our teachers the first of August. We get a material book, so they're going to have reference sheets that they can go back to. We're going to provide some materials for them that we feel like they will need to successfully implement this. But we're very excited to add this to the toolbox. We don't want them to think this is one more thing, one more program. We're just giving them more tools to help make their classrooms more successful.
We are very excited about it, and they have worked so much prep going into this training. So I recommend that Ruskin Board of Education approve the twenty-three, twenty-four, that's our next coming up school year Professional Development Plan as presented.
Your motion.
I make a motion, accept it as presented.
I'll second.
I also want to say publicly, Russell Springs First Baptist and the Church of the Springs, because the, they require, the Cagan requires a lot of space and different things, and we didn't really have a good space for what they wanted. The churches have opened up their buildings for us to do the training at this summer. And so our elementary will be two days together, and our middle and high will be two days together at those locations. And they've been, they've been great to work with, and very hospitable, and appreciate their cooperation and participation. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Salvi?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item is Ruskin County Schools, school year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four Certified Evaluation Plan.
Ms. McCall's up again.
Well, basically, the committee met, there's no changes from the setup this year. I mean, it's kind of another one of those things, it's a formality, it's the opportunity. We nominate, we vote, we select committee members, then we send that out, we tell people at the buildings, hey, you're a representative, if you've got any concerns, any issues you would like for the committee to address, please feel free to go to them. So we all met, I guess, the end of April, everybody was good. And, you know, a few years ago, when this was first being developed, it was a little more tedious, you know, there were lots more decisions to make. But as, you know, I've reached out to the Cagan representative several times, and that's what he says, you know, it's basically a formality, unless there's something that changes in the state, you have a real specific concern from a teacher or an administrator, just give them the opportunity to have their voices heard and, you know, aggressively, because for the last couple of years, we have been fortunate, people are comfortable with the setup, and so we are looking forward as it is.
And the state, the state board hasn't done any changes with it, so that's allowed for us to kind of keep the status quo with it. And I appreciate Mrs. McCall's work on both of these two items. I recommend approval of Ruskin Schools Certified Evaluation Plan and accompanying assurances.
I'll make a motion to that effect. I'll second.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Salvi?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item is Executive Session, Student Discipline and Employee Discipline, KRS sixty-one dot eight one zero one F.
So KRS sixty-one dot eight one zero one F permits Board of Education to go into Executive Session for a hearing which may lead to the expulsion of a student and discipline of personnel. So we need to go into a motion to go into Executive Session.
I'll make a motion to go into Executive.
I'll second.
Five fifty-five. Yeah. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Salvi?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And that's Mr. Dryder and Ms. Dameron to join us.
Need a motion to resume, please?
I make a motion to come out of Executive Session.
I'll second.
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Salvi?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
I move to adopt stipulations that discuss student ID EX twenty-three dash oh-two to be expelled for one year starting May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three. And we need a second.
I'll second.
Okay.
Vote.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Salvi?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins?
Yeah.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item is Wilderness Education Project, Project Aware.
This is just an informational item at this time. We have, again, been asked to participate in a grant with the same entity, the Wilderness Education, that.
We can hear you.
Okay. That they're the same one that had offered us the opportunity to, that funded Mr. Sloan's position, and this grant is called Project Aware. This will be, if we, if we're successful in getting it, we'll know in September. It will run from September thirty, twenty-twenty-three, till October the first of twenty-twenty-eight, and it will provide a staff member, a full-time program manager, and a full-time social, emotional learning support specialist, pay all their salary with the fringe benefits for five years to help with students and and families for mental health issues. They can do help with student support services, crisis response plans for students that have exhibited warning behaviors, all those things like that. So again, the letter commitment has been submitted. It is not, it will require formal approval from you all if we do get the get the grant, but really excited and and feel really good. I think there's a really good opportunity for us to participate with this. Two other schools, districts would be with us. And again, I appreciate Wilderness Education Project thinking about us for this, because it would provide two additional folks and really helping that mental health field. So it's just an FYI for tonight, but I just want to put it on your radar.
Next item, Personnel Reports.
Okay, Mr. Dalton Robertson, Ruskin Middle School, resigned April sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three. He was an eighth-grade science teacher. Kate Decker, Ruskin Middle School, resignation May twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three, ELA teacher. Brandon Cooper, Ruskin High School, hired as head boys' basketball coach. Casey Hoskins hired at Ruskin High School as assistant dance coach. Mr. Bryce Bailey, Ruskin Middle School, resigned May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three as their head football coach. Madison James hired as Ruskin High School head volleyball coach. Sherry Whittle hired Ruskin Middle School cook and cashier. Jennifer Aaron, retiring, effective July one, twenty-twenty-three, as a cook and cashier at the middle school. And Mr. Lucas Ford will be transferred, I've transferred him from special education teacher at the at the middle school to special education teacher at the high school, effective for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And Mr. Sean Coffey transferred from special education teacher from the high school to the middle school in-school suspension teacher for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Ms. Glenda Prater, she has resigned as their head coach for swim and the dive team. Benny Smith resigning from Russell Springs Elementary School, effective May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, as a custodian. Reagan Helm resigned from both the assistant girls' basketball coach at the high school and the head girls' basketball coach at the middle school. Mr. Kyle Blue is hired as a middle school teacher for ELA or English Language Arts for Ruskin Middle School for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Catherine Miranda Cole, James Elementary School, her contract not renewed for the, effective June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. And Kaylee Petty, James Elementary School teacher, end of year, June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, non-renewal. Mariah Dykes, Russell Springs Elementary School Instructional Assistant, June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, non-renewal. Haley Padilla, the following going to be hired as district-wide substitute teachers. Haley Padilla, Gracie Wells, Angela Skous, Whitney Gaskins, Holly Miller, Julia Balt, and that as substitute teachers. Gina McQuarrie, Denise Lauter, and Tara Hill as food service substitutes. And Mr. Eric Bennett at Ruskin Middle School, resigned. He teaches at the middle school, but he was our freshman high school basketball coach, resigned effective May twelfth, twenty-twenty-three.
Is Sean Coffey still the middle school athletic director?
Yes, yes, and he'll be doing their in-school suspension, yeah. This time of year is always a lot of personnel, and there'll be more for for next meeting. Let me, let me just mention too, Mr. Kazook, before we do adjourn, we have not, we will, I've talked to Mr. Kazook about May thirtieth, if that works. That was the date that you'd said for the special board meeting. We have not done our fiscal year twenty-four budget. We've done the draft, and then May is the tentative budget. We got our tentative seek forecast and going over those numbers. I was out some days with Kobe Leesig, Mrs. Miss Carnes has been at Casbo. Just need a little bit more time to delve through those numbers. So we thought about having the special call board meeting on on May thirtieth, at which time we would also look at our fiscal year twenty-four salary tables for for.
What time was that day, twelve?
Mr. Kazook?
What time?
Well, I had the appointment in Lexan then ten-thirty that day.
Ten-thirty? Well, ain't no way you make it either.
Or ten, ten. Well, it depends on who's in afternoon.
So just whatever the board's pleasure.
When you, when you would like to meet.
Well, just at the evening, or that, well, or.
In the Stelby shop, five works good for me.
Five works for everybody else.
We'll do it at five, that's fine.
Okay, that's five minutes.
That's fine, thank you.
I've been here last one time.
So May thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, we'll have a special call board meeting, and I'll get the everything set up, sent to you all.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
What about?
All in favor for adjourn?
Yeah. What about the district?